Okay, the time is now, well, seven oh four up here. It's another time zone in the back of the room. I'm gonna go with seven oh four. This is our Borough Council regular meeting, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. We'll begin with the moment of silence for Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Ramsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight we'll be recognizing Lieutenant Miller, and I thought it would be appropriate tonight if we all took a moment to recognize how lucky we are in this borough to have a great Police Department, Fire Department, EMS, all the folks that work there, staff. You know, we really appreciate the work they do. So I'd like to take a moment to to recognize the safety that they provide us and and hope that they always come home safe. Now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary of the role, please.
Mr. Ramsey?
Here.
Mr. Hicks?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis?
Here.
Ms. Mellon?
Here.
Ms. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Stube?
Here.
And Mayor Schultz?
Here.
So as Councilor Ramsey just mentioned, we're gonna, a few of us are gonna step to the podium to recognize Lieutenant Lieutenant Miller. Could join me.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see so many individuals here to honor Lieutenant Miller this evening. And we promised Lieutenant Miller that there would be some moments of seriousness here and also a little hu- little bit of humor along the way as well. So, you know, I was sitting in Lieutenant Miller's office at about three o'clock this afternoon, and we were having a debate on what the protocol would look like for this evening. Who would say what, you know, and we labored over it. So essentially, our lieutenant, Steve Latchell, won out when providing the bio that I would typically have given, so you'll hear the bio later. I will do the introduction remarks this evening, though. So we are here this evening to honor the service of Lieutenant William David Miller, who has retired from the Carlisle Police Department ever after having served our community and this organization with selflessness and honor for twenty-six years. While both Mayor Schultz and Lieutenant Latchell will touch on a number of Dave's achievements throughout the years, I wanted to take this opportunity to personally thank you, Dave. For your many years of leadership, your professionalism, and dutiful and passionate service to the borough organization, the Carlisle Police Department, and our community. Your hard work and dedication to the cause has not gone unnoticed by those with whom you have interacted, have helped, guided, inspired, lead, protect, and serve. I thank you. Your roles in ever-evolving responsibilities throughout the years have nurtured and built strong relationships, as evident by those that are here this evening. Our emergency responders, community stakeholders, officials, and borough personnel, who have often complimented you on your expertise, your guidance, and assistance with matters small and large in scale. Dave, thank you for all that you've done for our Carlisle community and this organization. It has been an honor working with you, and we sincerely hope that you will always consider Carlisle Borough home. Now, before I pass the mic to the mayor, a little bit of humor here, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that your presence will also be sorely missed by the non-uniformed personnel as well as uniformed alike. As noted, you have been instrumental in helping guide and work alongside our staff. Thus, our non-uniformed staff have taken this opportunity to ensure that while you may not wear the Carlisle Police Department uniform for long, they would like to invite you to wear the borough fluorescent-colored t-shirt proudly. And stop by on any of the job sites or facilities when you have an opportunity. So with that being said, I'm gonna pass it over to Mayor Schultz.
And I'll start, I'll make some some more personal comments in a moment, but I'll start with the proclamation I've I've signed in honor of Dave's service to to the borough. Whereas the Borough of Carlisle, Pennsylvania recognizes its greatest asset, people who serve the community on a daily basis, Carlisle's public servants. And whereas Lieutenant William David Miller is among our many public servants who have been dedicated and committed to service. And whereas Lieutenant Miller has been employed by the Borough of Carlisle since January twentieth, nineteen ninety-seven, that was before I was even in law school, Dave, it's been been a while. Whereas Lieutenant Miller has served the Borough of Carlisle Police Department, rising through the ranks of senior patrolman, corporal, sergeant, and lieutenant. And whereas Lieutenant Miller has undergone countless hours of leadership training to prepare and serve in various capacities throughout his tenure, including, among others, Cumberland County Special Response Team Commander and member for three hundred seventy high-risk incidents, K nine handler for nine years, accreditation manager for five years, and supervision of Carlisle Police Department responses for more than two hundred community events. And whereas Lieutenant Miller provided instruction to the uniformed and civilian communities, having taught classes for emergency services personnel for the South Central Task Force, Regional Municipal Police Academy, Carlisle Police Department, and Civilian Safety Curriculum. And whereas Lieutenant Miller has shared his knowledge and expertise as an instructor of emergency services curriculum for Alert at Texas State University, a presenter at Homeland Security Conferences, and chair of the SWAC Working Group for South Central Task Force Criminal Justice Committee. And whereas Lieutenant Miller has served the Borough of Carlisle proudly and with distinction alongside his fellow officers and command staff. Now therefore, I, Sean M. Schultz, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Carlisle Borough, do hereby commend the outstanding service performed by Lieutenant Miller. And those are very, most of dry facts. To me, Dave, I've 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 only been on three ride-alongs. The first one was was with dearly departed Simon Jackson, who I'm sure is here in spirit tonight. I'm not sure if you were the second. The other one was with Jeff with Jeff Currie's. I can't imagine three different personalities that I rode along with. And then and then, Dave, with you, that it was a long night, it seemed. I think you, I think I swung by around eight o'clock, and I I hung out with you till about one or one or two AM. And there wasn't too much going on, but I know we got an SRT call where you were, it looked like it was going to be an SRT call, but they were just looking for some advice from you because of your many years of of service. I think it was maybe East Pensboro was out, an incident out that way. But you also served on the the committee to select our current police chief, along with with several other members of of borough staff and and Dan Free. And you approached, you approached that with the same professionalism you approach everything else, and I highly value your your input during that process. So if you like having Taro in town, you can you can thank Dave. If you don't like Taro so much, he's not here, we can make fun of him. You guys, sometimes you can blame me or the or the former Borough Manager. But that 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 professionalism that you brought to that that process was incredible. And during that ride-along, because I hadn't spent much time with you before before then, you, it was clear you were devoted to to training and improving your, not only your your professional credentials and skills, but that of the entire department. And along with that, because it was a long evening, I got to know you and you as a father, talking, talking about your your family and and the travails, you may remember, you know, your your family was going through it at that time. And and that you, and and although, Dave, you know, you sometimes come across a little rigid, it was, it was good to see that, see see that that side of you and and your your humanity, because I think a lot of times people don't don't see beyond the uniform that you all wear and understand the human being behind that. So, Dave, again, I'm sorry to see you go. I'm glad you're you're moving on to an opportunity that I hope you you find happiness, satisfaction in. I was at the DCA meeting earlier this evening, and I mentioned your retirement coming up, and Stacy Cool seemed, you know, she was happy for you, but was was disappointed, too, to see you go. So you've touched people's lives in this borough, and we thank you very much for that. Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement. Lieutenant Latchell?
Well, Mayor Schultz touched on a lot of things I was gonna talk about with Dave. I have some basic facts here that I can read that that Mayor may may not have touched on, but, you know, I've known Dave, I've worked with Dave for over twenty-five years. You know, he's he started here, he was a member of the Coast Guard. You know, he started as a patrol officer, just like me, made it to OIC, made it to Corporal, he made it to Sergeant, he made it to Lieutenant. And I was sitting there, I was talking with Dave today after the manager had left the office, and I was, I I I said I was sitting down the other day, and I thought about all of the officers that had gone through the Police Department since I had started. And Dave started a year before I did, and it was over a hundred. And I I I thought about that for a minute, and I said to myself, I wonder how many out of that one hundred-plus officers that have been through the Carlisle Police Department, is how many have made it twenty-five years to retirement? Or more, or twenty-six in this case? So the answer is seventeen, including Dave, so really not that many. So it's, 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 I think it it shows dedication and perseverance. It's a difficult job, it's hard on your physically, it's hard on you mentally, it's hard on you emotionally, it's hard on your family, because you work nights, work days, you work evenings, you get called in, all sorts of things. So, and and Dave not just doing patrol things, he's been a member of the SRT since ninety-nine, I think. He was a commander of the Cumberland County Special Response Team for, I think, eight years, and it's always been somebody from Carlisle. Before him, I think it was Dzinski, and before him, it was it was Lieutenant Walters. But I think that's been passed over to somebody now from Hampton, so the the SRT team will never be as good as it was under the Carlisle guys, that's for sure. I, I'm just saying. I I'm sure Sergeant Winkleman will do an excellent job. But, you know, a couple other things about Dave, like I said, we've worked together for a long time. I could sit here and tell you a bunch of cops' stories and 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 go through some things that we did together about maybe chasing people down on bicycles or whatever we were doing, we used to ride bike patrol together. But I won't get into that, but a couple other things to touch on is, for those who you don't know, the police station used to be here in the basement. And I think there's only four of us left that still remember that, besides Sergeant Guido. So who was here back then, too? So I I just, I I I just think it's a testament to to Dave's wanting to be a law enforcement officer, and and he is retiring, but he is staying in law enforcement. He's gonna go work for the District Attorney's Office here in Cumberland County, so he's not really going that far. He's gonna be here in Carlisle, so he'll still be around. But there's a couple other things that I wanted to touch on, besides him being an SRT commander and a really good firearms instructor and basically a good guy overall, not counting law enforcement. He's a graduate of the FBI Academy, not too many years ago he went, which, again, you know, he was in his late forties, very physical academy, he did very well there, he stays in excellent physical condition. Again, I just chose the dedication and perseverance to the job. He does a lot of things for the department, he does a lot of things for the community, he does a lot of things for the borough. He sometimes is tireless to a point where it almost drives me crazy. But that being said, is he will be sorely missed for all those things that he does do. And, you know, from time to time, I'm sure me or Sergeant Booker will give him a call and ask him about accreditation, because, yeah, I wanna make sure we get the Cumberland County CID group accredited. Dave was looking forward to that. It's a joke, it's an inside joke. But anyway, you know, I just wanted to bring a couple of those things up. I could sit here and read through these things, the mayor touched on a bunch of them. I I just felt that the the whole point of when we started here, back in the old station, and where we were as a police department to what we've come, become over the years, you know, from very humble beginnings in the basement to two forty Lincoln Street, it's a big change. And and a lot of people don't think about it, I just wanna reiterate it once or twice more, it's like over a hundred officers have been through the ranks. In in my time, Dave's been here a little longer, so it's probably a couple more than that. And like I said, only seventeen have gone the full distance, so to speak. And I I'm not saying every, it's it's just the perseverance, because a lot of people just can't make it. So for whatever reason, whether it's injuries or sickness, or they just don't wanna do it anymore, whatever, whatever the reasons are. So I just wanna recognize Dave for for twenty-six years and four months of working here at the borough. I know he'll still be around, but he will be sorely missed. Then, on behalf of the department, and Borough Council, and the borough, and the community, I'd like to thank you for your service and for all the things that you have done to make the department a better place, Dave. Congratulations. Please come forward.
So we have, we should explain before.
Well, he's already saw the gift.
Yeah, sure. I mean, why don't we step, why don't we step forward? We're we're gonna pass, Lieutenant Miller's getting a plaque on his, his years of service, a proclamation, some goods from the borough, other than a t-shirt. Yeah, obviously, well, we have past council. Again, so you're not working in the back.
Mayor, I appreciate you using the word rigid. I've been called a lot worse, so. And I I can be rigid sometimes, as people who know me, no. You know, thinking about all the officers that I've worked with since I started, thinking about the fact that I've seen, I've been here through four different mayors, been here through three different police chiefs, including, including Lieutenant Latchell, who was acting chief for a while, twenty-nine council members I've seen come and go. I've worked around, interacted with, observed, and been observed by easily more than a hundred thousand Carlisle residents throughout the years, as as people rotate through their lives here. I've seen presidents and CEOs of this, and directors and superintendents and board members of that, and seen a lot of changes, a lot of changes in industry in Carlisle and farmlands, leagues and other businesses, warehouses, everything else come. And I've also, throughout the time that I became a police officer, there's been five thousand four hundred and eight police officers that have died throughout the nation. And I've, I've read all their names, quite often have, throughout the years, worn morning bands to honor them. So it's been a lot, it's been a lot. I've given a lot of myself to this place, and I've actually lost a lot of myself to this place, but that's part of the job. I didn't realize that sometimes, and and my family watched helplessly sometimes as that was happening. But I also gained, I gained a lot. So throughout the years, all those different portions of myself that I had lost, I, when I looked back at what motivated me to come back to work every day and serve this community, I also gained a whole lot, gained a lot more than I ever lost. And my wife is seated here, she is, she has served every single day with me. I've also learned during all that time that to serve a community like Car- to Carlisle, a complicated, I'll use the word complicated, community like Carlisle, none of us as individuals are exceptional at being able to do that, it's it's physically impossible. So what really matters is the partners, the teams, the relationships that you build. And there's a lot of different entities represented out here, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, YW, and County Communications, the Fire Department, Dickinson, the list goes on and on. And I just, I feel very blessed that throughout my career, I've been able to to develop relationships with so many of you and your organizations, and we've been able to work together to serve Carlisle and actually get things done. I feel blessed for those relationships, and I look forward to still seeing a lot of you. And I just wanna end with, you are blessed to have the police department that you do here in Carlisle. Thank you.
Dave, thanks again, and Sharon and Jordan, I know you're here tonight, thank you, thank you for for sacrificing Dave's Dave's time to, for the betterment of the of the borough. We appreciate that. And I'm I'm sorry, I I wasn't sure I was being, I was being clear. Did I, we came out late because of an executive session, which I I guess I'll take the opportunity to announce that we had an executive session regarding acquisition of of real estate and in the main case in litigation. But should we take a, take a moment? Yeah, let's, let's take a recess, let's take about ten minutes. I'm I'm making, it's a sacrifice, because there's a Sixers game tonight, not the, not the kind of sacrifices you made, Dave, but it's, so why don't we take ten minutes, enjoy some refreshments in the in the back? Back in in session, and we have an opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard, so if there's anybody here this evening who would, who would like to make any comment on on Borough Government, please take, take the podium. I'm not seeing anybody here, do we have anybody via Zoom? Okay. Next up is the Consent Agenda, it's a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on in one motion in their current form if discussion is desired. On any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda, and that item will be considered separately. Is there any such item requested for removal by council? Any by the public? Okay, I'll consider a a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by the deputy mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mellon, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, and the consent agenda has passed, so following along on the agenda, the pages in in white have have been approved. Next, the regular agenda, there's no table of continued and recurring items, reports from elected officials, there are none, right on to Public Safety Committee. I move that council authorize the closure of C Street between West and Factory Streets on May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, from eight AM until ten PM, for Community Day fundraiser for veterans' services. Approval shall be contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the Borough one hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Hicks, any discussion? Excited to see, see this new event for, to to help serve our veterans. I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, motion passes. Next, I, next I move that council, little applause, we don't wanna applaud this number too much, but it is what it is, inflation has has hit us all. Council, I I I move the council approve a contract for one million one hundred thirty-seven thousand two hundred thirty dollars to Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated for a two thousand twenty-six Pierce Enforcer Rescue Pumper. The purchase will be ordered through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Cooperative Purchasing Program, contract number zero one three E twenty-two dash two forty-two, bid number seven seventy-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by by Councilor Hicks, is there any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, motion passes. It's gonna take a little while, but we'll have it eventually. Next is Public Works.
I make a motion for council to approve the purchase of a Doosan, I I don't know if I'm saying that right, Doosan pull-behind air compressor and attachments for the borough's mini excavator, a diamond rotary mower attachment, a diamond hydraulic coupler attachment, and a four-feet grading bucket for a total of fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars and twenty-seven cents from Highway Equipment and Supply Company of Harrisburg, PA, through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Council, Council, Perry has made a motion for the purchase of a Doosan pull-behind air compressor and attachments, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stube, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
I move for council to approve the purchase of a new Elgin Pelican PLO emission diesel street sweeper from ANH Equipment of Harrisburg, PA, for two hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars through the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Cooperative Purchasing Program.
Councilor Perry makes a motion for the purchase of a street sweeper, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stube, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
And lastly, I move that council, Borough Council authorize the full release of the financial security posted by the Carlisle Equity Investors LLC of Concha Hocken, PA, for its Taco Bell land development plan at four oh one East High Street in the amount of two hundred five thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and thirteen cents to reflect completion of the project.
Councilor Perry makes a motion for the relief, the full release of financial security for the Taco Bell that everybody on Facebook loves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stube, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, motion passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilor Hicks, Sustainability and Community Planning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three items this evening. The first is I move that Borough Council approve the annual action plan and community development block grant program budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three and authorize the mayor. for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, and authorize the mayor to execute all associated documents.
Councilor Hicks makes a motion to approve the annual action plan for CDBGA. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any discussion?
I, I just wanted to remind, since we have folks out here, that last week we did get a brief from our representatives at HRA to walk through many of the provisions here. So we got, we got a good, good review of where the funds are going.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Next item is I move the council approve the submission of a certified local government grant application for twenty-five thousand dollars to fund an inspection, a level survey of architectural and historic resources in downtown Carlisle.
Councilor Hicks makes a motion for a grant application for the inspection level survey of architectural and historic resources in downtown Carlisle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
And my last item, I move the council authorize a steps, a small government enterprise license agreement with ESRI, ESRI, over three years.
Councilor Hicks makes a motion to authorize a steps, small government enterprise license agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the deputy mayor. Any further discussion?
I, I'd just like to comment. This is a very powerful tool that lacks one thing, somebody who knows how to use it. I am happy to say we have somebody on staff who I am convinced will give us a return on this license well, well beyond what we're investing here. Does all sorts of really novel and important things, so I look forward to learning a little bit myself as we navigate this.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? I'll call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
And that concludes my briefing.
Thank you. This is your second bite of the apple. If you couldn't think of anything earlier that you wanted to comment on, you have another opportunity now. So anybody who would like to provide any, any comment? Yeah, see, not any by Zoom. Okay, we'll move right on. Reports from council members. Nothing.
Go Sixers.
Yeah, we're, we're ready to go. Deputy Mayor, not too long, go.
I won't say anything about the game.
Councilor Hicks.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Council Perry?
Um, I just wanted to say that Hope Station will be having our annual Juneteenth celebration on June seventeenth, and this year it will be downtown between Pitt and Hanover Street. Everyone is welcome, please come. We're looking forward to be a good time. That's it.
We have, we have law school commencement tomorrow, and then the, the college commencement on the twentieth. So it's going to be a busy, busy May, and then a busy June, so look forward to all those, those events. For manager, anything from staff? Okay. Then, seeing nothing further, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.